Thank you for joining Mary Ann and the Barrow podcast. I am delighted to be joined by Neil Farstad in Creston, B.C. Neil, thank you for taking the time to chat with me today.
Thank you for having me.
So Neil, you were raised in Creston, you worked there, you retired, you're now retired. You formerly were into land development, logging. So you have been in Creston for, for a while. You pretty much spent your life there.
Off and on, yes, I've lived in other places for a number of years, but I was raised here and retired here.
Right. So on November 11th, you gave a presentation or what you call a deputation in Creston. Can you tell us what happened on November 11? What, what exactly is a deputation and what happened?
A deputation is a notice to give to a governing body. Okay. That you have issues or you have concerns and you need for them to hear it. And it goes on the public record. And our concerns, of course, are many. Okay.
Yeah.
And this deputation was done to address those concerns. And to have those concerns received and replied to. Okay, by the regional district of Central Cootenay and the town of Creston. So that's pretty much it.
That's it. So in a nutshell, tell me, what was, what was your concern and others in the community?
Well, it can go anywhere from high taxes. It can go anywhere from the rapidly changing outlook on property rights. The, and again, taxes. And just who are these people that are doing the governing? Okay. And the legitimacy of this government, municipal and all of them. And if you're going to do that, you have to go back to 1992 and have a look at Agenda 21. And it's a huge part of it.
So in other words, you're questioning the legitimacy of the leaders in your community. You invited, you invited the elected leaders to be there. You invited the police to be there.
Yes.
It was been well attended. You had 500 attendees in a town of five, 5,000.
Not this time, not this, not this, not this one. No, I'm not sure. But I think we were between 250 and 300. It was a really lousy day.
So in a small town, that's quite well attended. So what were your charges? What were you suggesting that the leadership in your community?
If, if you wanted to condense it, what we want to know, are basically six vital questions. And it has to do, you know, with oaths, covenants, declarations of, of office. And did they understand what they signed? Do they understand, you know, that there's a public-private partnership behind most of these things these days? What jurisdiction are they in? Are they in an international jurisdiction? Are they in a federal jurisdiction or are they in a provincial jurisdiction? Or a municipal jurisdiction? We don't know. And being that we're living in a place where back in 1992, the whole goal of this situation where Agenda 21, Agenda 2030, and I hear rumors of Agenda 2027 these days. We want to take back our inherent rights and clean up our municipalities. And pull those roots out that the U.N. has put here. And go back to peaceful, orderly, good governments.
So what are, what are the roots that the U.N. has put into your local government?
Many. What they have done, okay, through the municipal primer that I quoting me here now, I think it came out in 1994. That was done by the Federation of Municipalities in Canada. And it went to every municipality in, in Canada. About 1,300 of them, if I'm correct. And it basically told them how they were going to restructure themselves. And Canada, under Mulrooney in 1992, basically gave away our sovereignty legally. But there's a big hiccup there because nobody has the right to do that. And it's right in the BNA Act. It's right in the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. I would like to quote the Constitution of Canada, but the Constitution of Canada is kind of a useless document right now. Because nobody's using it and it's never been supposedly ratified. On, back to the U.N., they decided Canada will become a nation-state, okay, of a member of the U.N. The provinces will become sub-nation-states under the U.N. And all the towns and cities were to be reformulated and known as city-states. Then they hired chief administrative officers all through everywhere. There's a chief administrative officer who is directly linked either through an NGO or the back door to the municipal ministers or directly to the U.N. And they are the ones that take the orders and disseminate the information and tell the mayor what to do. And the mayors, whether he knows it or not, or she knows it or not, are also employees. We saw that here in Creston in 19, not 19, I think it was shortly after it was the COVID was declared, you know, an emergency. And where the mayor and the C.A.O., Chief Administrative Officer, spoke publicly and stated that everyone that worked for the town, and I think associated with the town, if they wanted to work for the town, were going to have to be vaccinated. And the mayor stated publicly that he knew it was illegal, but they were going to do it anyway.
So he knew what he was about to do was illegal, but he's going to do it anywhere, anyway.
And I say sue me because I've got a, I can, in one day, I'm sure I can gather up about 10 or 20 affidavits. Because it was done on the radio and I heard it myself.
Yeah. Well, on the public record then, so in other words, your leadership in your community in, in township of Creston is the
Compromised.
Is compromised, seriously compromised.
Yes.
So the deputation was an announcement of this or a challenge to them? What exactly was the deputation trying to achieve?
The deputation was an announcement. And in a sense, it was also a challenge, which asking for six key questions to be answered. Because these people that were doing this, and I'm not just to pick on 2020, but now, okay, when we have ICLI involved and we have these 15-minute city things and the total surveillance and you can't build a single, you know, family dwelling is what they're really pushing for. And the unbelievable amount of taxes that are going on. It is a challenge to them. Declare yourself. You're U.N. employees. Which jurisdiction are you coming from here? Okay, now talking to the mayor yesterday, he swore up and down that not one penny has, has come from Creston to the U.N. He's probably correct. But all our tax money goes to the provincial treasury, is it the Minister of Municipalities or something? They changed it. You don't pay your taxes at the local town hall anymore. Okay, you submit your money straight to Victoria. And we don't know where the money goes from there. And we don't know how many non-NGOs are, you know, affiliated with this going backwards and forwards. So this was the challenge. These are the questions we wanted answered. And it was basically comes down to six questions. I mean, I can quote them for you.
Actually, go through the six questions and let's chat about each one.
Sure. Well, the first one as newly affected official, newly elected officials. What did you sign? Two.
Okay, let's, let's stop with that one. What did you sign? So are you suggesting that they have all signed an allegiance to the U.N.?
I don't know. I don't know if they've done an allegiance knowingly. But I am pretty sure that they have unknowingly or knowingly partnershiped with the U.N. Because did they sign a, an old-fashioned oath? Yeah, that puts them, you know, in a place as a public trustee to look after the public? Okay, that does not have anything else on it. Now, here in town, they sign a covenant, okay? They claim that it's for the public good. But it doesn't talk anything about actually serving the public directly and listening to the public and doing the will of the public.
Interesting. Okay, so that's point number one. Point number two.
Is, did you understand what oath you were asked to take when you took public office? In my opinion, they took covenants. They did not take an oath. And it's all in the weasel words.
What do you mean by that? What do you mean?
Well, use the word, use the word person in court. And a lot of times the judge will not talk to you because he can't hear you. If you address him, I am a man with my long-form birth certificate, for instance, he has to hear you. So person is considered two things and there, it's also a straw dog, you know, application when it comes to this stuff. So it's, it's double talk. The Indians used to call it split tongue. And I don't think it's any different. Okay, I really don't. So when you're dealing with multiple oaths and again, I don't know what contracts, the C.A.O.'s, the premier and his various appointed or selected individuals, what contracts they have signed. We don't know.
No.
And the other thing is, what jurisdiction are you in and who's your employer?
That's important.
That's very important. Because do you know now if they're working for the U.N., okay, they have no jur, no, no responsibility to the public. Their responsibility is to answer to their employer. And the U.N. is corporation. It's totally a corporation. So that brings us back to number four. Did you sign more than one oath? And oaths are bane of society right now. They're a total bane of society. I mean, you can look at both sides. I mean, you have military oaths. You have public oaths. You have various societies that say their oath supersedes all other oaths. Okay. Do we know what oath Mr. Trudeau signed with the W.E.F. or covenants?
Right.
Okay. So oaths are where the poison is, in my opinion. And they're usually done with fear, you know, or you've got the oath, you're covered.
Yes.
Okay, there's no integrity. I don't see any integrity in any. So that takes us to number five. Who did you swear to serve? And the possible proof of the town and the regional district fraud, maybe in your oath, a covenant, which is not an oath with regards to the town of Creston and a declaration of rule appointment official is not an oath with regards to the regional district of Central Cootenay. And that's, that specifies our local area, our geographical area in the Creston Valley. So we're asking them, please produce any and all oaths, covenants, declaration of office or any other contract you have signed with regards to your service to the town of Creston or the regional district of the Central Cootenay. Which brings us to number six.
Oh, let me, let me pause you there. That's a very, very important point.
Yes.
Because if they have an allegiance to another body, whether it be the United Nations or the World Economic Forum.
Yes.
These, this needs to be disclosed.
Yes.
And we know at a federal level that this is happening where there, the allegiance is elsewhere because
I think I've got a picture, I think I've got a picture home of 60-some cabinet ministers or, or members of parliament with their, you know, faces right there, all acknowledged W.E.F. members.
Exactly. And Klaus Schwab says that he controls half of the Canadian cabinet. So on a federal level, we know it's happening. On a local level, certainly it is happening, but you are rooting this out in a very direct manner.
Yes.
Okay, that's a really important point. Number five.
Yep, it is. And they do not want to address it.
No.
They're scared of it.
They're scared.
Yep. So, number six.
And then number six.
Where's the published law that is presented, that has been presented to the British Columbia Legislature? Where it's been debated, brought to a vote and being passed and proclaimed regarding the climate action plans, sustainable development, municipal partnerships, and all United Nations public-private partnerships. If these laws cannot be produced, these public-private partnerships and United Nations programs, they are not compliant to British Columbia laws. And government is acting in a state of ultra virus, V.I.R.E.S.
Which means?
Which means they're acting way above and beyond their state of jurisdiction or their area of jurisdiction. It's not a good thing. It's not a good thing. I mean, there's, there's different interpretations of it. But it's pretty much saying that it's taking it to de facto law and it's illegitimate in any sense of the word.
Right. So the essence of this deputation is suggesting that your elected officials
Right there.
They are acting not in accordance or on behalf of the citizens that they're supposed to be representing. But they are answering to a higher body.
Yep.
A global body which is directing them in their activities.
Yeah. And they're, they're in denial of it and they believe that they are operating in perfectly legal manner. Well, they are. They've crowded all their eyes, you know, crossed their Ts and dotted their Is legally, totally. However, you can't seem to get them to go back to the source of the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, it's like I told the mayor when I had a discussion with him yesterday, very briefly. I said, you need to answer our questions. I told him three times or four times. And he said, well, he says, I don't believe any of this is true. And again, I said, Arnold, you need to answer our questions.
And there's a date attached to that, by November 30th.
Yes. And you know, none of them will tell you the truth. He said they were seeking legal advice. I said, great, please talk to a lawyer. And of course, he wanted to know who my legal team was and I just politely said, that's none of your business.
Exactly. Because you do have a team, but of course you don't want to disclose the identity of your team.
No, no, it's not going to happen.
No.
This morning, and it's, this is to be expected. I got a letter, not a letter, an email, and I can't open it here, sorry. Because I haven't even opened it other than, you know, put it on paper. The CEO of the regional district, I think her name is Kirsten, somebody said that our deputation had been denied.
How do you deny a deputation? That, that makes no sense at all. A deputation
I'll, I'll, I'll send you the email that she sent me. You can do what you want with it. I don't care.
So in other words,
she claimed that they were working for the public.
In other words, are they suggesting that they will not respond?
That's right. That's right. They don't know. They did respond.
Well, by denying, in a sense, denying a, you know, refusing to respond is a response. You were guilty as charged.
Yes.
Because if you were not guilty, you would respond to each of those six points with ease.
I have to be real, I have to be real careful what I say here right now. Real, real careful. I have to be very guarded and I don't mean to be secretive. That's the last thing.
No, no, no.
But I have to be very, very guarded about what goes on here from this point forward.
Yes.
There are a number of responses that we are considering. Okay, and we will probably do all of them.
Okay, I don't, don't expose anything.
No, I can't.
You, you can't. Maybe let's talk a little bit about the, the location of the deputation. Because I found that interesting. You held it in a church. Why?
Okay. It's very important that we do this process in a neutral place. I think as I've said, I will not step into their chambers. Whether it's the regional district's chambers or the town of Creston's chambers. For two reasons. One is it's my opinion they are fraudulent. Okay, they're acting in de facto law, okay? And they've hidden, you know, these public-private partnerships and what they're doing. And the climate action plan is basically nothing more than a political narrative filled with fear and bullshit to herd the sheep. Okay? And you can call me a conspiracy theorist for that. But the one I'm quoting here right now are the 1,600-plus scientists. And then two Nobel Prize-winning physicists that said and have said and stated and on the record that there is no climate action, you know, emergency. We go through cycles. Earth is not the most stable planet in the world. Yes. Yes, we can absolutely clean up our act around here. And that probably starts from what's falling out of the sky every day. And it's a huge impact on us. So that said, this neutral place was important because if I went into their chambers and I've had lawful people tell me that if I go in there, I will be found as a beggar.
As a, excuse me?
As a beggar.
Oh.
Okay. Going in with a petition or a deputation, they will view me as a beggar. Okay, because I walked into their jurisdiction or what they think is a jurisdiction. I'm not going to do that. Secondly, we did it in the church because the church has been very, very adamant about helping people, didn't matter who they were for the last three-plus years. And they offered us the space. It has an excellent audio system. It has an excellent video system. And it holds just around, I think, around four or 500 people. It's closer to 500, depending on they squeeze them in. And I wanted to use that space and I wasn't quite sure why. Until it occurred to me that when you are gathered as men and women, not citizens, not persons, men and women under God, in a house of God, okay, you trump so much of the legal ass. And, you know, all our Bill of Rights, BNA Act, even the Constitution, which is not ratified as we know, and it's pretty much useless till it is. All start as under God. Even in court, it starts as under God. So you have the ability, if it's done properly, and I'm not saying how to do it properly because I don't know. I got a few ideas. But you trump so much of this legal ass. And I will not go into the legal administrative side of the law. We have no hope. Because it's corrupt from one end to the other. And that's probably not going to do me any favors where judges are concerned. But that's the way it is, you know. On the other side of the law, on the private and trust side, when you arrive as a man under God with your long-form birth certificate, it's a natural progression that the judge has to look after you and your remedy. And it can get really, really tricky and that's about all I want to go on that.
Yeah.
Because depends what, you know, the person is or the judge is that's looking after you.
Right.
So there is that aspect. And that was the main reason for doing it. On a personal level, for me, and I can't say this for everybody, so I'm not preaching. I believe this has to be, anything that we do these days has to be holistic. Simple as that. Everybody's got their own personal take on that. But there has to be the physical element of standing up. There has to be the emotional stability. And I guess you've got to have a good heart. You have to have a certain amount of mental clarity. And you have to have some sort of spiritual connection. If you don't have those foundational tools or pillars, you're not going to go far.
I think that's a very important point to be approaching this holistically. We hear so much about holistic medicine, but holistic politics in a sense is
I've never heard of holistic politics.
But it's so interesting. So how do you gauge support in your community?
How do I gauge support? Well, just about every landowner and farmer and people, you know, whether they're logging or everyone that I've talked to are 100% supportive. I'm not running for politics, so I'm not, you know, going door to door. But I do know a lot of homeowners. And, you know, those that are aware of what's going on are 100% supportive.
Yes.
What percentage do we have? Boy, I'm guessing here because it is a guessing game and, and you know, the awareness changes daily. But I would say we've probably got about a 30% support. And I would say about another 30% don't have a clue and don't want their, they don't want their paradigm disrupted in any, in any way. And then you're probably going to have about another 20% or so, okay, that, you know, drank the Kool-Aid and the Weffer thing and all the, the whole nine yards. And I do not know about reaching them. I, I don't think that's possible, but I think there's other events already starting to take place that is going to really disrupt some belief systems.
Yeah, yeah. Well, your, your community of 5,000, is it?
Somewhere around there, yep.
The 5,000. I think in these smaller communities, people communicate more. You're, you know, usually you're well-connected.
Yep.
And I would imagine when word of this deputation gets out and people are talking about it very rapidly. And I would imagine when word of this deputation gets out and people are talking about it very rationally. I would imagine that a lot of people that are sitting on the fence would say, well, this is odd. Why are they not answering these questions? Because to me, if you're innocent, these are very easy questions to answer.
Yeah. Marion, we expected this.
Yes.
And I, I know it's gonna disappoint some people. Um but I expected it.
Yeah.
Um but. They have done me so many favors by doing what they've done.
Well, don't, don't tell me too much.
I'm not, after Christmas.
Don't want to disrupt the process, but um. I found it quite interesting that you had mentioned that twenty or twenty-five communities. Have asked for a package. Um your package essentially and have copied your approach in other communities across Canada.
I know that um we've done our best to ask them to tailor it and use what they think is applicable. You know, and add what they think is applicable, you know, for their own particular areas. And I just sent one out to Vancouver Island today. So.
You know what? You, you have the presentation in PowerPoint. You have speech. In a document that's very easy for someone to look at and tweak for their own respective communities. But you're making it easy for people because you've done all the work. Your team has done a remarkable job.
Yeah, we've done our best. Um and things are changing every day. There's still more things happening every day. I mean, when I was doing this, it took me since. A lot of part of August to, you know, the eleventh and with a whole whack of help. To finally get a final draft. You know, my eyes are going cross. I've got this one, I've got this one, I've got that one, I've got that one. I don't know with it. Burn them all and start again.
Yeah, no, no.
It's, it's flooding.
It's, yeah, and it's been a tremendous amount of work. What precipitated this?
Oh, my personal motivation?
Oh, okay, let's start with your personal and then we'll take it from there. What?
My personal motivation? I've been down a ton of rabbit holes for the last forty plus years. A ton. Um and I'm tired of the bullshit. Can I use that word? I just am done with it. Um and not to sound arrogant in any way. It really puzzles me why people cannot see both sides of a coin. And I couldn't take it anymore. And uh I have to say that, you know, uh Maggie Braun's presentation that she did in Peterborough. When I read it, I thought, hell with it, I'm doing it.
You're gonna do it.
You know, and so I just presented it at their Creston Boston Tea Party moment.
Yes, and that was back in, that was back in August.
Yes. And it just grew from there. It just grew from there, so it's taken on a life of its own. And we're not going away anytime soon.
No, no, and you have, you have some very legitimate questions that you need answered.
They all need to be answered everywhere.
Every, yes.
And there's gonna be a lot of people that are a lot brighter than me and younger. And have more energy that are gonna take this to the next level, I'm sure of it.
Are you optimistic or is your team optimistic?
Um I can't speak for the team. Um I can. Tell you one thing that was told to me today. Um after I relayed my conversation with our uh Creston Mayor. And, cause I'm not a real patient person, okay? You know, I want, let's get at it and get it done. And um. Uh she told me, she said, Neil, she said. You planted the seeds, you water the seeds, you don't dig up the seeds to see if they're growing. Be patient.
That's right. Now you've done the hard work and now you need to be patient. I find it very interesting that the mayor wanted to speak with you.
Yeah.
I also found it interesting that David Eby and four other ministers happened to be in town quite suddenly.
I think there were four and I'm pretty sure he was here. Uh I wasn't invited to the meeting, but I know other people that were asking, you get this, you get this, why is it on my phone?
Very interesting. Another coincidence. But uh tell me, there was an audit of Creston. That um never was resolved. Fill us in a little bit on that.
Um I can't because. I can tell you that there was an audit that was never resolved. Um I do not have access to that information other than that I know it to be true.
Right.
Okay. Um and I can go on the public record knowing that it is true. Now, the people that were involved with it, I do not have any permission in any way, shape or form to drag them into this.
Right.
Okay, so a- again, I'm trying to respect people's spaces, okay? And this audit goes back sometime and I'm not sure how far back, but it does go back sometime. But it's not the only one. It's not the only one. The R D C K would be, you know, very interesting to open up their books a hundred percent. And see where all their money's coming from. And where it's being spent. That is a, that is a, um, well, that's Canada-wide.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's worldwide where all these organizations are, not just Canada, it's everywhere. But you have to remember, okay, the most important part here of this. Rooting out all this stuff. Is that when the federal municipal and federal. Union of municipalities sent out their. Uh municipal primer, municipal primer to all the areas. The U N purposely went to the lowest form of government. And so they went to the roots of government. Right, the roots. The working people, okay, the retired people, uh where people had value and assets. Where we generally, you know, went along to get along. If we had an issue, you know, we dealt with it. We didn't need a whole bunch of exterior. You know, forces telling us how to resolve things. We did quite well. And there were a lot of jobs and a lot of prosperity. Well, when that went out, okay, bang, they compromised that. So we have to start at this level. If you're gonna yank out the weeds and stuff out of the garden, that's where you gotta start, is right in your own backyard.
Absolutely. So I wanted to just ask you a little bit about this oath that changed back in nineteen ninety-eight. There, the oath was changed to the U N and there was a public-private partnership. That was created. Can you expand on that? Because that sounds rather significant.
On a little bit. In ninety-eight, in here in B C, I don't know if it was Hart Court or Glenn Clark, that was uh the premier back then. I'm not, I don't remember. When we had the municipal act, okay, there were a lot more powers and, you know, that uh the local municipalities could do. And it's a dirty word municipality, you know. Uh there's a capital M one and there's a lowercase m, okay, and they're. They have interesting meanings, but um I haven't been able to get clear on exactly what a municipality is. Anyways, that municipality, municipal act. Was pretty much, I'm told, gutted. And they reformed it and called it the Municipal Charter. And that is not nearly the same as the old act. It's very, very different. And that's what they go by. And then even today, when I was told about this denial. She quoted the Municipal Charter, this is what we're doing. Well, it's my opinion and others that the Municipal Charter is a public-private partnership.
Yes.
Okay, and when you look at the. Oath that they take in local level and town of Creston, it's not an oath, it's a covenant. And at every one of those, if you can dig deep enough, you will find. A public-private partnership. It's buried most of the time. It's really hard to find. And I haven't been successful in all of them yet.
Well, and a private, public-private partnership, in my mind, is treason. Because government is created to represent the people, not for, not to be in partnership with corporations. There's a fundamental problem.
Yes, there is. And according to various statutes under the Criminal Code. Um nobody has the right, okay, to give up the sovereignty of a country, number one. And number two, um the repercussions for this. Oh, they used to, you know, build gallows for things like that. It's not good. So, yeah, we're gonna have a fight. Yeah, we're gonna, we've got a fight on our hands. I know we do. However. Um so far, things have gone exactly, almost exactly like we thought they would.
Right.
Um and we'll see what comes next.
Which will be very interesting. A slight change of topic. But when we spoke earlier, you mentioned a tax situation in the UK. That currently is in the legal battle. Where people are remitting their taxes to a trust instead of the government.
Yes, they are. And I'm not the one that should be talking about this, but I will give you a brief overview and I can. Certainly uh hook you up with the, with the party that does know.
Right.
Um and because they are English. And um from what I've been told, um for the last two years. There's, is it a Shire or is it a borough or, you know, is it an area in, you know, the British? In England, they have different descriptions for, you know, geographical areas. And sometimes I don't even understand them. Anyways, they've had issues with their local governments there. And they've wanted to get some changes for quite some time. And they refuse to implement those changes. So I'm told there's a number of folks there that have uh created a separate bank account. And they are paying their taxes, yearly taxes, but they're putting that money into that bank account. Where nobody can touch it until issues are resolved. That may be coming to a neighborhood near us.
I, you know what? I like that idea. Because right now, I have serious issues giving our government any money.
Oh.
We're supporting a criminal organization.
Yes, and we're supporting a criminal organization that's purposely trying to starve us.
Exactly.
And steal our water. And if you talk to a fellow by the name of Jeff Sensor. Who has done a thoroughly remarkable job on the implications of fifteen-minute cities. And um. They want everything. And if they want you to upgrade your house, you're gonna upgrade it. For probably a minimum of twenty or thirty thousand dollars and they'll lend you the money, the government will, and they get first rate of refusal. So when you can't pay your mortgage, guess who's buying it all up? It's a real slick thing they've got happening.
Oh, it's a well-oiled machine.
Yes.
You've got the, you've got the Black Rocks, the Vanguard State Street, all ready. To buy up your property if you can't pay the mortgage.
Yep.
You can't afford to be in your home anymore. It's, it's criminal.
It is criminal.
It is. So. You, November thirtieth, will come and go. There's a plan in place. I'm sure your group will be meeting and plotting.
No, don't use the word plot.
But it, it, it's very exciting what you're doing and it serves as an excellent example to other Canadians. To perhaps copy your approach.
They absolutely have a hundred percent permission.
Yes.
Now, I'll state that here with you. I, I think I sent you a copy of everything.
Yes, you did. And you know what? I will put the uh information in the notes.
Yep.
And, and the uh your email.
There's one issue that I'll ask you after we're done the interview with that, but. Um they have a hundred percent free use to any degree that they want to use. Uh that information if they feel it's useful for them.
Okay, and this group is called Gather Twenty Thirty, is that right?
Not in my, my group, no.
No, no, but Gather Twenty Thirty is a group that has the information?
The Gather Twenty Thirty, Maggie Braun has the information on her Substack site, yes.
Okay.
Um Sheila, S H E W L A W dot C A. Sheila has uh all the information too.
Okay.
Wealth of information there.
Perfect. So I will put all of this information in the, in the notes. And uh then hopefully people will take the initiative in their own communities and push ahead. Because I think that this is a model that could work.
Well, we've got. Close to sixty-seven hundred views on YouTube. Which is pretty decent, I think.
Yeah.
And you know, there's, I would, I would expect there's probably close to twenty of the packages have gone out to different areas. If not thirty, because I'm only keeping track of the ones that I've got. You know, and there's other people have them and they're free to download, so carry on, man.
Carry on. Well, Neil Farstad, thank you so much for taking the time to chat with me today. And for uh bringing us up to speed on what's going on in Creston, B C. It's very exciting.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I hope we didn't mess it up too much.
No, I think it's perfect. Uh I think there's a lot of very uh interesting information here that.
Okay.
People can run with. So thank you.
You're welcome.